Good evening. I'd like to call to order this town council meeting for Tuesday, January 21, 2020. Please rise for a moment of silence. I have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Laughin?
Here.
Marrone?
Here.
Morgenstein?
Here.
Chortel?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa?
Here.
Zandry? And Chairman Savoni?
Here. Counselor Zandry did advise me that he had a work conflict prohibiting his attendance tonight. Before we go on to the consent agenda, we are going to have the presentation of certificates of recognition for girls' Little League softball of Wallingford U-10 softball Connecticut State Champions 2019. Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do. I mean, the rumor is true. I think if you all look to the right side of this auditorium, you're going to see a group of champions sitting there. The U-10 State Champions Girls Little League Softball. Unbelievable! So I want to, at this point, invite up Carl Tetral, the head coach. Carl? And as he's coming up, applause please. And we need Steve Cassess, assistant coach. Come on up, Steve. Steve here? Yes. And we need Keith Dundorf. Front and center! Congratulations, gentlemen. You aided a wonderful, a wonderful happening. And I'm going to give you the microphone if you'd like to say a few words, and then perhaps we have certificates. If you would, one by one, bring the girls up, and we can have them line up up here for a photograph.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. I want to thank Chairman Laugh- Vice Chairman Laughin for helping put this together. Also want to thank Counselor Fishbein. I know we had a missed opportunity in the fall, but he initially had supported this as well. So thank you very much. I'll keep it brief. I know we have to work tomorrow. It's already worn by my wife. But we have a phenomenal program in town, and we couldn't be prouder of these kids. You know, many of them have been in our program for four and five years. You know, we pride ourselves on pushing our kids. There's not a lot of coddling, and you know, we're very hard on these kids. And the results speak for themselves. We have a group of young ladies that, I don't know if there's a professional softball player among the group in the future, but I know we have fantastic, we have 13 fantastic young women that are going to grow up and be leaders in our community and in our state. On behalf of our league, our board members that are here, all of our parents, we are proud of you. We thank you for all of your efforts. These kids, you know, they start in January. They go right up until June 1st. They're selected by their peers as All-Stars. And then it's five or six days a week throughout the month of June, throughout the month of July. There are no vacations. There are no trips to the beach. There's no trips to Six Flags. These kids are committed, you know, 12, 13 hours every single week. And they have represented all of you in our town through now four consecutive district finals. Two by Coach Jamie. The last two I was able to snag. Sectional champions this year, and obviously state champions. Coach Jamie also has for our 12-you program, they were finalists in the state tournament this year. Couldn't be prouder of those girls as well. We are blessed to play at a phenomenal facility. So we thank Mr. Mayor and our parking rec and Department of Public Works and everyone we know. We know as a group that a lot of times our budgetary considerations that have to be made. And we are blessed and thankful to play at probably the finest facility in the state. We have full use of it, and our girls have really thrived. So thank you. Thank you to everyone. Thank you for having us. Got two awesome coaches here. We have an awesome board and awesome support staff. And there's a lot of great things to come from our league. So if I may, we have two things.
We don't know about outside, but we know the stars are shining tonight. In the door!
So, girls, if you could bring up, so we have a gift for you, for you and for the town hall. We have, please be careful, ladies. We have a, we have, we, the coaches got together. We got state championship t-shirts for the girls this year, and the parents all contributed as well. We got an autographed jersey that we want to present to Mr. Mayor, to the town hall. If you want to put it right at the front of the building, we'd be great with that, but somewhere prominent would be awesome.
Thank you very much.
And again, thank you.
Nice way to celebrate.
Thank you for your support. We really appreciate it.
Invite each of them up, and we can give them a certificate, shake hands. And if they, if the players can come up here on the stage then and just wait, after you receive your certificate, wait, and then photographs can be taken.
Mattingly Andrews. Smile, Matty. It's okay. Number five, Chloe Carling. Fifteen, fifteen, fifteen. I'm sorry. Congrats, kiddo. Number five, Julia Cassessi. Number 11, Lily Dandorf. Number 42, Alexa Fitzgibbons. Nina Gross. Number seven. Number 51, Haley LaValle. Mary Jane Prentice. Number four. Number six, Eva Sayez. Number 14, Logan Slabois. Number 10, Natalie Schaefer. Number 21, Ava Sutera. Last but certainly not least, number three, Sophie Tetrow.
I think the coaches, coaches need to get up here, and there's a chance for photos of everyone. Girls, I'm going to have some of you come down one step. Half of you come down one step. Hold in the front row. Okay, that's good. Makes you want to play softball, doesn't it? The 2019 Connecticut State Champions, right here before us! I didn't play on the team. The team! I don't like to intrude on the... Now that's getting close up. I think we'll all recognize their faces. Well done. Congratulations again. Thanks for being here.
All right, I think we can get back to business. Item three is the consent agenda. Can I have a motion on items not removed?
Mr. Chairman, I move. We approve or accept consent agenda items A through E, G through K, L-A as corrected, and L-B as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion on the consent agenda passes. With that, we've had some appointments. And of the appointees, I see Mr. Laterno here and Mr. Shewinski. Mr. Laterno is going to be sworn in as a constable, and Mr. Shewinski is becoming a full member of the zoning board of appeals. Come on up. Thank you for your service. Onto item four. I mean, item four, which is items removed from the consent agenda. We have item 3F. Can I have a motion?
I move, we approve a bid waiver in the amount of $24,954 to purchase six ballistic vests from Lawman Supply Company for the police department.
Moved and seconded. Thank you, Mr. Testa. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. As I stated in my memo, which I'm hopeful you all have, we were informed in 2019 that we might be eligible for some region-wide grant funding to replace the ballistic vest that our tactical team wears. As you know, we're combined now with Cheshire. And due to the fact that we're responsible for over 75,000 people combined between two towns, that qualifies the project as a region-wide funding initiative. Where we originally were informed that there might be enough funding to purchase all 17 vests from the region-wide initiative, in the end, there was only enough funding for six. So we're splitting the vests, three for Wallingford and three for Cheshire. The six vests that are being purchased by the region are being purchased through their own funding initiative from Lawman Supply, which we do a lot of business with otherwise. The intent of the bid waiver is to seek your approval to purchase our remaining six vests from Lawman, so that the order goes in as one big order. I understand that Cheshire, although they have to satisfy their own local purchasing regulations, is also going to potentially order from Lawman as well. And what we're looking to do is have all the vest sizes at the same time order from Lawman Supply. They have quoted to, Point Blank has quoted to Lawman the state contract price, which in our conversation with Point Blank, which is the manufacturer, currently that is the price that we would receive from anyone else, but they also say at the same time that pricing could change either up or down at any time. So I want to be certainly as transparent as I can to tell you that there are other vendors that sell Point Blank. So Lawman is not a sole source vendor. There are others. We're looking to just coordinate the purchase through one company to include funding from the region, funding from here in Wallingford, and ultimately, hopefully, funding from Cheshire so that they can receive their vests as well.
How much of the funding is from the region?
Enough for six vests, so...
Oh, for, yeah, I understand. You said that at the beginning. So this $24,954 is for the vests that are not funded by the region?
Yes, six vests that are valued each at $4,159.
The vests that are funded from the region are coming from Lawman?
Yes.
And is there something unique about this particular vest? Is there a reason why we want uniformity throughout the region?
John?
So in 2012, Region 2 gave us a grant to purchase the Pro-Tac taxable entry vest, which we currently use. Those vests now are expiring based on their manufacturing standards. You usually get five years on the vest. So we wanted to look at something to replace those, but industry standards today go for a more streamlined vest, not as heavy, which gives the operator an opportunity to move around and function a little easier than they would in a vest that can weigh upwards of 60-plus pounds when it's all equipped. So we tried to get the Periclee Armis Warcock Level 3A vest through the company, and that is a more streamlined vest, if you see here. Takes the arms out a little. It allows the operator to move around. Also have a different system in which, instead of Velcro, which sometimes can be very loud when you try to be covert, it's called the buckle system, and everything snaps in quietly in place. Makes it neater. It gives the operator opportunity to actually be able to button up some of his pouches quietly instead of having that Velcro sound. We also went with a speed plate. They are smaller and lighter than what we have now. A ceramic plate that we have now is upwards of 20 pounds. This is less than 10. And it's designed to stop an AK-47 or AR-15. So that's why we went with this type of vest. It also is being used by the South Central Region SWAT team, so we would have uniformity throughout the region.
Is this bid waiver really for the vendor, or is it for the vest, or is it for both?
It's for the vendor, Lawman, who has been quoted a price from Point Blank. To John's point, I just wanted to reaffirm, because the six vests that are coming from the region are a region-wide purchase, if you will, we become the custodian, but it's really not our property. So we agree to provide the vests, either personnel or the vests, to another team should they need them. The South Central SWAT team, which is primarily made up of several towns, starting in North Haven and North Branford, and then feeding down onto the shoreline, is all wearing this same vest. So we interact with that team often enough that certainly, uniformity is important to us. To further that point, Wallingford is the custodian of a very unique piece of hostage negotiating equipment that we have under our control, but because it was purchased with region-wide money, we agree that at any time, day or night, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that should another agency need that piece of equipment, we'll not only send the piece of equipment, but we'll send the operators with it. And that piece of equipment is several thousand dollars in value. So the region-wide purchasing process makes a lot of sense for a lot of reasons, especially where pieces of equipment are used somewhat infrequently, and I guess we're grateful for that in this context. But at the same time, you know, the little bit of funding that we have becomes important to being able to afford the whole thing to begin with.
Thank you. Counselor Chortel, this was your item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for coming out.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm not necessarily against this. I pulled this off the consent agenda more out of a philosophical reason. I think bid waivers should be regular agenda items, and this is exactly why. Great questions from Chairman Savoni, great answers. I think it's good to vet these things, even if it's a dollar over the limit, so I appreciate all of that. Just some very quick follow-ups, and you and I communicated before that, and I appreciate your responsiveness. And you've already kind of answered this, but absent the regional funding, let's say the regional funding wasn't happening, this is the vest you would go out, you'd want. You'd want 20 of, or 16 of, or however many. This is with this specs, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then we are transferring money out of the regular salaries and wages account. It looks like as of our November 30th finances, financial data, you're running about $58,000 in favorable, so that's why it wouldn't come from contingency. So that's, that makes sense to me. I just want to verify that you're still running favorable as of, the latest data we have is the November 30th. That's why.
Yes, so to your point, we were carrying two police officer vacancies up until last week, where we finally were able to find two quality candidates. So as soon as those backgrounds are done and they get started, that available funding from those vacancies will evaporate moving forward.
Got it. That's all I have. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Testa?
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. Just wanted to clarify something. You mentioned, or it sounded like you mentioned, that the price that you're getting on these vests was secured through the state bidding process? Correct?
Yes, it's a state contract price, although I want to be crystal clear with you and tell you that I believe that not everything that gets qualified as a state contract price really is a bid item. This, I believe, is, but it's not always like that. So I want to just be clear with you that not everything that's listed as a state contract price has been bid. You know, there might have been requests for proposals, and some suppliers bid or supply prices for certain items that never go to bid, but they're on this contract, which is made available to everyone to use as long as it complies with local purchasing licenses.
I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Questions or comments from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughin?
Yes.
Marrone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Onto item five, the public question and answer period. As we seem to have no takers, I will close the public question and answer period. And onto item six, which is to conduct a public hearing and consider and act on the following ordinance entitled "An Amendment to Chapter 203 Taxation, Article 6, Abatement for Members of the Volunteer Fire Departments of the Code of the Town of Wallingford." Before we take public comment, Counselor Chortel, if you would offer some brief remarks and summary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This first came to us from Counselor Fishbein in his role as state rep. Fishbein, at the end of the summer, that the state was allowing us to increase the schedule and increase the abatement amount. So it did go through the ordinance committee process, and just, you know how government works. Sometimes it took a little longer than we thought it would, but we're here, so Happy New Year. We're here tonight, finally. We hoped to have it done later last year, but there was a clerical... Well, it's not, it wasn't your fault, Barbara, but there was a clerical, there was a concern about what exactly we were approving for the final year, for the final year of the abatement. So we came, we brought it back to ordinance in December. We cleared that up, voting on the maximum amount the state allowed in the schedule. So that's pretty much the background on this, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the public? And once again, no takers. I bring it back to the council for a motion to approve the ordinance. Oh, I closed the public hearing. Thank you. Can we have a motion on the ordinance?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion from the council? Counselor Fishbein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to briefly say that our volunteers are very important to our town. We're very unique, and we're very gifted that we have a great set of volunteers. And I'm very happy that we were able to work together on this, not only to expand it, but to, I think, make our ordinance better for those that serve our town, but perhaps live in a different town, or it's actually vice versa, those that live in our town that serve other towns. So hopefully, other towns will follow our direction in that regard. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Testa?
Thank you. Just for a clarification point, I noticed we're adding a statement that states the volunteers include members volunteering in Wallingford and living outside of the town who otherwise qualify for the abatement. I don't recall. How does someone who lives outside of town qualify for an abatement? What would that abatement be? An example, please?
Well, they would have to get the municipality wherein they live to participate.
Okay, I knew that. I didn't remember when we discussed it, how that worked. Okay, so if their community offers it, I'm just saying, what, I just don't, I just, I'm not against it. I love this. I'm just wondering how, why this is in here. Mayor?
I think procedurally, if I'm understanding the discussion, procedurally, if a person lives outside of town and volunteers within Wallingford, they would show us that they pay taxes in the other town, show proof of that, and then we would provide them with a check.
That was it? Okay.
Right.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, and that's good to know. Good idea. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the council? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Laughin?
Yes.
Marrone?
Yes.
Morgenstein?
Yes.
Chortel?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The ordinance passes.
Congratulations. Onto item seven. We have two, seven and eight to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we go into executive session pursuant to Section 1-206D of the Connecticut General Statutes with respect to the purchase, sale, and/or leasing of property.
Second.
Second.
And for 1-225F and 1-206B regarding strategy and negotiations with respect to the pending foreclosure matters of Town of Wallingford versus Kevin T. Butler and Town of Wallingford versus Everett Tenney at all.
Second.
I did it first.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of going into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. Please kindly clear the council chambers. I call the meeting back to order. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session, please?
I move, we come out of executive session.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in public session. Can I have a motion on number nine?
Mr. Chairman, I move, we authorize taking action in the pending foreclosure matter of the Town of Wallingford versus Kevin T. Butler, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the council? There being none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 10.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we authorize taking action in the pending foreclosure matter of Town of Wallingford versus Everett Tenney at all, as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the council? There being none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, the motion passes. There being no further business on the agenda, motion adjourned is in order.
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed, you don't need a motion to adjourn.
Those opposed can stay, we'll all leave.